I'd like to call order the special meeting dated March 3, 2016. Row call please.
Director Tye is it?
Here.
Director Cholari?
Here.
Director Carpenter?
Here.
Director Burrisney?
Present.
I'd like to note Director Crowley is not here yet, but we have her.
She has contacted me saying she's running late. And she's also contacted the chief. Over here. All right. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a good republic for which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All please be seated and let's go to public comment number one. Okay. You do not have anyone for public comment. Have the regular agenda, the first item is consider and discuss the fire chief's deployment plan for 2016 dash 2026.
Yeah Director, I think there's one add was, item was an add on was your committee.
Do you want to do that first then?
Yeah, I think that's on the revised.
Yes, I'll be admitted at that.
Okay, all right, let's see the first one. Goals of the particular committees that we have assigned. And the reason why I wanted that on the agenda is I made a request at our last meeting that all the chairs of our particular committees draw up some goals and objectives for 2016. And I just wanted to reemphasize.
We have to keep our feet to the floor.
Well, I just want to make sure that we have it completed by our next March meeting, which is coming up here in a few weeks.
HR does not have any.
Well, but you're still, you're still in the process.
I'll think of it as I'm hiking into the sea.
I know that strategic planning, we had one for 2015, I think we just need to tweak it a bit. Chief Stevens is working on the emergency preparedness. I'm sure finance has a plan that they're working on.
Yep, I mean, well, this is, I appreciate you reminding me of this line.
I still have to do my, what is it, 700 form and my other things too that have to be done, so March is a big month for all of them. That's what I just wanted to go over, that I like them by our marching. So let's go to item two. Consider and discuss the fire chief's deployment plan for 2016, 2026 for the mental park protection mission. Chief?
Directors, it's my pleasure tonight to bring you about 22 slides, so I won't cue you with PowerPoint. And then the staff report that we gave you, I tried to give you an area as well, some of it's also covered in PowerPoint. And you know, it's not just the chief's plan, it's the chief's plural plan. I know that the chief long, chief Navarro, chief Stevens specifically, we've met on several occasions or they've met amongst themselves and they've also met with some of the Thai chiefs in the room as well. So it's not just the chief's plan, but you know, I'll be the one that kind of addresses it because I was the one that worked with them to make sure that we can get this on the agenda for time in a special meeting. So I'd like to thank them for all their work and time because I think it was a good experience. So moving forward, as you can see, it's a 10-year window. We tried to look longer, it's just difficult, even 10 years is difficult, but I think reasonably this puts us within an interesting and somewhat attainable period of time as long as a number of factors kind of fall into place. So there's always things that will change, but so far I think this is our best look at what can be done. So why review deployment now? I think the biggest one that's not on here, but it comes up later is once station two is completed, suddenly the opportunity to have a station that can take different types of equipment that we were not able to use before falls into play. So in the past, as you know, we've discussed this before, was somewhat limited where we can put a ladder truck, for example. That will be the case with station two because it was built to handle any type of equipment. As station six would be built that way in any future stations. But the kind of the core principles in reviewing deployment.
Can I just interrupt for a second? One of the things I think is really important is that we appreciate the fact that when we started the station two process, you know, we looked at the footprint, we said the footprint wasn't adequate and that's why we acquired the adjacent parcels. And if we hadn't done that, we would not have this flexibility.
No doubt.
Had we built that station on the, just the original parcel, you know, we wouldn't have that capability. So we should remember that as we look at the other stations coming down the road.
And it's a fair point, you know, in terms of how that all went out because it was a multi-year process, including unfortunately the building of it. But you know, we learned a lot from it obviously and did it during a recession, so it was, at least we kept going. So the big thing is to support our mission, obviously to address and maintain acceptable response times, to address maintaining effective fire force, and it's not just for firefighting, but for different types of calls because we have different packages of resources that we send, is to address increasing call volume that we see out there and I'll show a little bit later on, we discussed that as well. Existing and proposed growth as we can all see, whether it's the Facebook, the Bohana project, the Sobrato project, the housing on Willow Road now, the housing on the Haven Avenue area, we're putting in, you know, hundreds of units and so forth. And then units and other things that are put in already. The other one is to address increasing traffic congestion. And when I say standards, as Director Carpenter and I were talking about before this and I've sent you some of the letters to Caltrans, to the state as we address CECL, as we discuss Caltrans standards for complete streets. There's nowhere in those documents that addresses emergency services and specifically fire services. Hospitals, ambulances, routes of travel, you know, everything now for multimodal, which is being proposed and carbon footprint is decreasing the size of the roadways proposing to do that. And with that decrease, you know, adding bike lanes and different things like bus routes and so forth, that may or may not be conducive to how we need to operate. It's also support our ISO rating, which is addressed in here, you know, as you know, we went to a class two from a class three this last time. So obviously we want to maintain that, but we also want to make sure that if we can do better, we try and do that as well. You know, it's a big jump between a two and a one, but you know, as I'll propose in here, you know, different things will help us on that path. Our configuration for the most part has stayed the same for 20 years. The staffing only recently was modified and that was based upon the MIU provision that had four personnel on the truck. But for essentially the last 20 years, since the era of Fire Chief Rick Ty, since the time of opening station 77, you know, this configuration that we've had has stayed the same. I went to a county chief's meeting yesterday, we had some dogs laughing, we had some interesting dialogue because, you know, I wasn't planning to present, you know, any element that's quite honestly, I just use it as pass on, which we do on roundtable, but you know, I wanted to make sure that the chiefs understood that we had maintained our configuration for the last two decades and others have not. They've browned out stations, they've closed down different resources, they've consolidated, which isn't necessarily bad in some cases, but it does challenge the system when resources are taken away and things are closed. So you know, that we want to grow is the proposal that you've seen, based upon conditions. In my opinion, I think a lot of them should be discussing the same thing, but here's the great news, we're a fire district, they're not. So it's really more in your control and it's for us, I think, as the staff to tell you, me as the chief to tell you where I believe we need to go, which is what this is all about. The last thing, which I know this board agrees to and is the benefit again of a fire board, a single focus district allows us, I think, to provide a superior level service to customers or to people that live in this community, that work in this community, the businesses that reside here. And I think when you work for a city, just from what I'm seeing, and it's on, would reinforce, because we've had these discussions, it's not so easy and there's a lot of competing interests, whether it's parks and rec, you know, whether it's the police department, whether it's roads, whether it's anything else, it is, it is more challenging for these things to happen. So we're, again, I think, in a good position to do different things. So what have we done? And again, it's in the report, you know, the big thing back in 2011 in response to the traffic issues was to designate primary response routes for travel, to try to address at that time, which is now blossomed into about 300 different traffic control devices from bull bouts, rounds, chicanes, humps, lumps, bumps, tables, you name it. As traffic started to become a problem, the effort was out there to try and control it and keep it out of the residential neighborhoods. Well, those devices in any cases also slow us down and there really wasn't a collaborative effort, I think, on behalf of any of these jurisdictions to work with us before they put these in. And they certainly didn't feel like they needed to seek our approval in most cases. And I can tell you, like at East Mellow, when I worked out there, you know, overnight when they started closing down roads and putting in planer boxes and different things, that now there's curves and dead ends and things like that, that they never even discussed it with fire district because the first call we went on when that was a problem was, was obviously the one that we found out about it on, which is not the way you want to do it. That's gotten a lot better, but it also still is, as you know, with bigger routes like El Camino, which is the next one, and Middlefield are concerned. You know, the almost unbelievable paradigm here outside of that we're not included in any of these, you know, documents is this mentality, which I don't understand, but you know, it is what it is, that we're going to grow the community, but we're going to restrict and cut down on the roadways. And so, you know, it's really created a lot of issues. As you know, I think we've finally been successful with talking to the town and talking through with the town of Davenport in that last joint meeting, why you wouldn't want to do that on El Camino. Adding a traffic signal with them at Al Madral, which is a shared project, which is, I think, a great outcome from that meeting. And then really importantly as well, you know, trying to let them know, hey, you know, that the county's proposing to do the same thing on Middlefield Road, which is the next parallel path that goes through your community. How much traffic do you want to put into your community by all these things happening and slow down the response times that you have, which are actually very good right now? So you know, I think that was a good joint effort with the board and the staff and then also working with the city directly in a joint meeting. 2013 September, the ISO updated, as I mentioned already, to a class two. It was a year-long effort on our part, it was successful, which is great. September 2014, we updated and added traffic preemption, as you recall, that came out of negotiations with Facebook. We used the funding that we received from them, which brings up later on at the end, you know, why were we doing direct dealings and negotiations when we should have some sort of mechanism that pays for development that rather than sending the chief in there to negotiate, heels with the people that come into town, etc. So the preemption was a big thing. We added, as you know, quite a few signals, we added, we upgraded the system we had from infrared to GPS and you know, I think we're in a better position today. Now we're doing that again for El Camino. But you know, preemption of itself doesn't solve the problem because gridlock means you can't go anywhere. And roadways like we see with Willow, it's even more complicated for traffic to get out of the way because of the road design. So you know, we've got that agreement with Palo Alto to go through their jurisdiction to get to the east side, but it's certainly not the way you want to do it, but it is part of what we are doing to get more successful, simply because daily it becomes problematic. We all, last week we did the standards and cover report, we finished that, that was an update from 2014. And we've done the last one, been almost 10 years, actually a little over 10 years, the 10 years when we started it. And that report, I think, really gave us a third-party look at deployment, the stresses of the traffic and it really put us on the trajectory that we've been on to move forward on different things that we knew, you know, needed to be done, but again, we weren't really having the opportunity yet outside of building a new station to do. September, we did the time-based performance standards, it got a lot of interest from some of the jurisdictions. Some of them, as you know, questioned, can we even do this? Can you do that? Don't we have to adopt that? To which, you know, I reminded them, the fire board is actually in charge of the fire district and you can do what you want when it comes to acceptable performance and standards for response times. And I think it was a good line in the sand, almost like taking traffic counts on a street before it's going to get worse, to see where were we and then as we go forward, you know, what is going to be the impact of those times? Is it getting better? I doubt. Is it getting worse? Pretty much I think everybody realizes it's not getting better, it just seems to get worse in terms of how long it takes us to get around certain times of the day, which again is part of the point of this, this presentation. In 2016, in January, you know, two, actually two months, three months ago, we did an overview of the responses, that was kind of the segue for this presentation. I tweaked that a little bit, now there was a couple of mistakes I made in there and some of the call numbers with some older information, but I've updated that a little bit. We took a 30-year, we actually did a one-year look back, a five-year look back, a 25-plus year back plus the five, which was 30. And then we did up to 60 years back, looking at annual reports, what the call volume was, where it was, what companies were busy, what was the configuration at the time. And I think the big thing for me doing at that point was not just the growth, but reminded of the configurations that we used to have before we kept the last one for the last 20 years and how there were essentially almost the same number of personnel today as there was in 1985. Obviously more resources when we were running squads and so forth, so the configuration did look different. We actually had more pieces of equipment in service daily, which was kind of ironic, albeit to be fair, some of those had two people on it. In some cases, like the truck up at station four, we have one person driving that, which you know, I wouldn't be advocating today, but nevertheless, we did it differently. February 2016, this last month, we went over the Nexus study, I appreciate that. We approved that, there was a huge redo on that and then it outlined, or outlined the new impact fees that we're looking at. Just so you know, those have now all been sent to the jurisdictions, to the county, city mental park, city of East Palo Alto and to the town of Davenport, to their city managers and with a follow-up letter in, you know, not in electronic form, but envelope form, stale mail as well. So we've covered both bases. The next logical step we'll have to have a discussion about is at our next meeting with you at your regular board meeting, we'll be okay. Now, what's the plan to deal with the council members, the board of supervisors, to make sure we get on their agendas, answer any additional questions that they may have and kind of make sure this thing gets past the city manager, county manager level to hopefully some degree of implementation through the council dais. So what do we know? That's all of what we did. Now we get back to, you know, what's driving this. In 2015, as we discussed, two months ago, we had 8,547 calls. That was an increase of 324 calls or 4% from the previous year, over 1,200 calls or 15% from 2010 and 3,269 calls from 1985 or essentially 30 years ago, 38% increase. So the trend, it bounces around a little bit, you can't say that every year is exactly the same, some years are busier, maybe more winter storms, maybe more grass fires, out-of-county responses. The number of emergency incidents though typically, in summary, has increased over the years, albeit in some cases, you know, over a trend over time, not necessarily year over year, but again, overall, it does appear to be that way. Of 8,547 calls in 2015, 3,334 for service were on the eastern side of the fire district, meaning the other side of the Bay Shore Freeway. I know all of you who have attended council meetings out there, other meetings out there know that if you don't leave at the right time of the day, we're all going to be late. And I know the city council members found that out when they did their first meeting in Bellhaven and many of them relate to those same meetings. So you know, it's good to get that experience, to see what it looks like, but it certainly, as we've shown through video, looks a lot different where you have emergency responders trying to get to a call as well. What's the bottom line? About 39% of our call volume is on the eastern side of the district. And that's significant because geographically, when you look at that size compared to the rest of the district, it's actually not that big of an area, but if you look at the density maps which I have in here, it is, it has a lot of volume in terms of emergency activity. So in summary, the number percentage will grow based upon proposed development because, you know, quite honestly, we're just adding headcount constantly out there in terms of either commercial space or now again, some of these residential projects that are going, going to go in or have gone in. What else do we know when it comes to things like emergency medical incidents? Out of, you know, of the 3,334 emergency incidents on the eastern side of the district, you know, Engine 2 in East Palo Alto responded to the majority of those. It's the busiest company in the district, it responds to the most emergency medical incidents in the district. And essentially a total call volume, it's 27% is just on that unit alone. So a quarter of the volume of all seven stations is in East Palo Alto. The part that doesn't really cleanly fit over here as well is that Engine 77, for example, also runs calls over there. So sometimes, you know, you could look at 77 stats and essentially part of those really are calls in East Palo Alto as well. So the next busiest district is six at 1,299 calls and you can see almost double the volume from the next busiest station that we have, which is downtown. Now the good news is, when you look at where we're building stations, we're upgrading our capability, well, it's two and it's six. So you know, again, I think we've made some, to Peter's earlier point, we've made some good moves and continue to make those moves in terms of where's, where's the need, not just what's the oldest building, but where can we add capacity, where are the trends telling us? And so that's a, that's a big deal. In 2010, you know, five years ago from the data that we have, we responded out there to 1,979 calls, so you can see, you know, at this point, it's almost 400 incidents more, which is, you know, trends with, with the earlier information said, district-wide. I don't want to say all the increases on the east side, but a lot of the increases on the east side. Station two is the busiest station in the fire district. It used to be the busiest station between San Francisco and San Jose. I don't know other people's numbers anymore, the county quit, you know, doing data that way, so I can't see San Mateo County. But in San Mateo County, up until the point when they were collecting data, it was certainly the busiest station at night. So between 12 midnight and 8 o'clock in the morning, it was, it was essentially the busiest station in the county. So that tells you something as well, that tells you the company's up and down a lot of times all night long as well, where other stations may be sleeping. What's it look like visually? Because we can talk about what the numbers are, but the numbers don't quite do it justice. As we look at the density map, we start to realize, you can see the density, if we were to pan in on this as well and Ben would tell you, it's in some cases, call on top of call on top of call. So even this doesn't do it justice because you can only see the top marking when in fact below it are a number of other calls at the same address, for example, over in the same neighborhood.
Chief, are there, I'm sure there's some frequent calls all the time.
Yep.
Like we have some of these, like nursing homes or extended living homes.
Right.
Somebody falls or they keep responding. Is, can, can you compile us a list of maybe the top 20 for calls for service?
Sure. Yeah, we can look and see where the.
For those types of facilities?
And I think what I mentioned in January was the clinic at the VA. And so that's moved now, and when we're looking at the trend analysis, why was it the Engine one was reducing its call volume at the time? It was the only station. It's because the clinic moved. So yeah, that's what we, let's summarize anyway, we can do that, we can look and see where the majority calls. The VA, I bring that one up because I know that at one point when the clinic was in there, we were responding on average 1.1 times per day. So you know, it's, it was a frequent user of our service and that's what the nursing staff, to your point, I think, and also physicians there. But once you enter in the 911 system, you know, this is the path eventually leads to us. Are the 1,000, no, excuse me, 187 fires that occurred in the fire district in 2015, 77 of those fires, or 41% occurred in the eastern side of the district. Engine two was the first due to 55, I'm sorry, Engine two was first doing 55 fires and 77 was first doing 22 fires. Now, is that meaning that all the fires weren't in two's area? They weren't all there, but again, 77 with two is out on a call is going to be the first to do a call, right? So they're going to take a fire sometimes as well. That's not all structured fires, it could be vehicle fires, refuge fires, grass fires. So you know, it's not diving deeper, but it's a, it's a call where you need water, it's a call where you need hose. So you know, to some extent, it plays into this, this whole thing regarding deployment and configuration. In general, you know, station two has more fires than any of the other stations in their area. You know, if you dive again deeper and just to note, in terms of community tragedy, and the building up above on the left actually could have been a tragedy, it was an illegal housing unit for VA patients. I want to say there was somewhere between 12 and 15 people living in here, so that made it illegal because it was not a care, port and care facility. And we've seen some of these from time to time in East Palo Alto, but this one was notable because people were jumping out of windows on the arrival of the firefighters. So non-sprankler building, you know, illegally used, it just goes to tell you that East Palo Alto has some significant issues when it comes to what is and you know, it may be getting better, but it's got a pretty, pretty tragic history. So the last 20 years, we've had at least 16 people die in fires that we have found or significant events like the plane crash that we had. And that wasn't the only plane crash, it just means that the other ones, people did not expire. They were, you know, mostly they were injured. In 97, the Ford Street Fire, we had nine fatalities, we pulled 11 people out of buildings, saved two, but lost nine, of which five were children. 2002, the Way Fire, we had two fatalities, it was on Christmas morning, so that made it, you know, tragic and notable. Illegal construction contributed to one of the fatalities because the young 14-year-old girl in the bedroom couldn't go out the window because they built an iron room all the way around the house and so that cut off her E-bus. And we struggle with that still in East Palo, either stuff that was already done or people that continue to do illegal remodels because of the number of families or people living in these small, single-family residentials. The best example is drive anywhere in East Palo Alto, look at the number of cars on a Friday night or Saturday and you'll see, you know, the car, the streets are stacked with traffic because of the number of people living in these homes. 2007, we had a grass fire, it found at homeless encampment and unfortunately, it was actually part of a homicide investigation. We had a cave dug into the side of an earthen burn along the bay, great view and you know, weird location, but people again, living off the grid and a hole in the ground and that was a fatality. The Beechtree aircraft crash, you know, miraculously only three people died, that was where the Tesla employees of the aircraft. But I think we all remember, you know, what could have happened with the daycare center that was set open 15 minutes later. Part of the aircraft, the wing and landing gear crashed into that and caught on fire and only recently had it opened back up. And the last one was recently, this is last year, this is in the trailer. We had another teenage boy that was killed in a trailer fire last year, it was on the old Romic site. The trailer was actually part of the remediation process that went on for the land out there. Somehow these guys got in a trailer and unfortunately, one of them didn't get out and it caught on fire. So again, that's the history, you know, we can go on and on and on, all the close calls, we can go on, you know, about Green Oaks Academy, the Springfieldville, the kids, the 60 kids that almost died because the fire was over their head, you know, and there's other stories like this in East Palo Alto. Again, it's kind of a community of tragedies over time, so it's not just volume, it's, you know, the risk. And the risk is still there based upon the overcrowding. There's a number of fires, again, you can see the concentration mostly in the east side, East Palo Alto, and also some obviously in the, in the Bellhaven or station 77 area and then sporadically throughout the district. East Palo Alto, what we know, again, is our most densely populated city, has more apartment complexes than any other city and recently, as we all know, one of those big deals was done and you know, over 100 apartment complex buildings and I think over 8,000 occupants that are in those. So it's, you know, there's a lot of, not only low-income housing, but you know, multi-unit high-density housing in East Palo Alto as well. East Palo Alto is the highest crime rate of any of the jurisdictions we serve, albeit dropping. You know, you won't see me talking about shooting numbers, assaults and some different things. It's still above the average, but it has come down significantly, which is a good thing and is actually going to be the thing that I think changes the community ultimately because you're going to see, and we're seeing it already, some people call it gentrification. I'll just call it improvement, which is people moving out, people moving in that, you know, don't want it to be what it was. So you know, I just was on a, looking at a website the other night to look at data on the crime issues and in the, in the comments, one of the comments was, as the crime rate goes down in East Palo Alto, it's going to get gentrified, so you know, we're all, all of us that live here are going to get forced out. Well, the alternative was, you know, pretty much an unsafe place to live, so I don't know what's worse, but they're both not good. In the M2, mental park area, Bellhaven area, just below it, has the most proposed redevelopment, actual construction projects that are going on, have gone on and proposed to go on in the future. So again, East Palo Alto is busy, M2 is going to be big and there's a lot more going in there. And those, you know, it's also the area of desperation, I would call it, for the city of mental park. Because I remember the day looking with the city manager, several city managers ago, we talked about low-income housing, where they could put housing, and at the very bottom, we got to the page, we went. And at the very bottom, we got to the page, we went through Sharon Heights, we got to, you know, middle of Mellow Park, you know, over this area. And then the biggest red dot that he had was on Haven Avenue. And I said, but, what's that? He said, well, it's housing. And I said, well, that's in an industrial, right industrial neighborhood. And it's a flood zone. Why would anybody want to build there? Well, they're building there right now. So, you know, again, that puts, that challenges us in different ways. Mixed use, I'm not a planner or zoner, but I can tell you, I don't like it. And it, and it puts a significant amount of responsibility on us simply because we add residential and commercial in places where we issue more hazmat permits than anywhere else, in places that are right along the bay and exposed to, you know, storm issues, title issues, you name it. And I don't think it's the greatest place to put it, but it is what it is, and it's, it's getting built. Of the five thousand, five hundred and thirty-two emergency medical incidents that occurred in the district in twenty fifteen, twenty-four hundred and thirty, or forty-four percent occurred in the eastern side of the district. So again, forty percent of, almost forty percent of the call volume for the district is in the east side, twenty-five percent of the overall call volume in general, forty-four percent of EMS calls. So that's significant because you can see in terms of the health of the community, not necessarily even the age, but again, density, availability of healthcare, I mean, all these issues kind of play into, you know, what goes on out there. Engine two responded to seventeen hundred and eleven EMS incidents, or thirty percent of these calls district-wide, and seventy-seven responded to seven hundred and nineteen EMS incidents, so fourteen percent of the low district-wide twenty fifteen. So again, East Palo Alto, east side, significant amount of emergency medical calls, almost, if you think about it, fifty percent for the whole district happens on the east side when it comes to medical. And it's the only place of all the stations where we can truly say that over seventy percent of their workload is EMS-based. Again, increased numbers as well in terms of the calls. Station two has more EMS incidents than any of the other stations. And there it is. You know, and again, calls stacked on top of call, to Rob's earlier point with healthcare facilities, which we'll look at. You know, there are some of those out there, but it's also a single-family residential calls as well. What do we know? Fifteen hundred and sixteen inspections that the engines do on the east side, three hundred ninety-three businesses, house or stentated inspections are done out there. This accounts for twenty-six percent or a quarter of all the inspections district-wide. And they also have some of the largest occupancies and always have had, whether it was Tyco with a hundred and sixty-five thousand square foot floor space for the production line, or it is now Facebook with, you know, almost over five hundred thousand square foot proposed to be up to one point five million square feet of the largest open-air office structure in the United States if they build it that way. You know, it's, some of these things are huge and they're somewhat challenging and daunting to spend the time to, to go all the way through. Some cases, prevention will be the lead just because it's, you know, it's more in their, in their realm than it is an engine company. But both share at least the exposure to walk through it and understand what they're doing in there. So all those numbers, all that info, you know, kind of recap from January, and understanding where we are today, where we were in February with the last special meeting, where we talked about sources of revenues, we talked about TRAs, tax rate areas, we talked about the appropriate spending limit, we talked about the PERS obligations, you know, where we are with a lot of these different things. We're in a, we're in a good position right now, I think, as a, as an agency that's coming out of a recession like everybody else, but I think very uniquely situated in the world with the tech industry, you know, all the improvements that are going on. I mean, Peter sick the Wall Street Journal on me the other day, which I just got off the phone with today again, as I told a reporter, these are good problems to have because we have employment, we have growth, but it's also challenging. The traffic's an issue, moving around's an issue, increased population, service delivery. You know, the bottom line is, things are changing, you know, what do we do to improve? And we can see through the years, whether it's the photograph of the first station out in East Palo Alto up in the far left from the nineteen twenties, the one on the far right from the nineteen forties, the one on the far left from the nineteen fifties, and now the new one that will open up here shortly in a couple of months. You know, the reality is, we're, again, positioned, I think, very strategically to make other moves, more moves, to add a better level of service, and to look at what we need to do for, again, the next ten years in the district. So in the report that I sent you, it didn't go to the nuance of all these issues, but, you know, I discussed already or mentioned already the impact fees. Again, that's been a two, three-year project that we finally got through and now has been delivered. We can operate independent from a fee structure for apparatus, equipment, and stations, but, you know, again, what's the, what's the equitable solution here? And that is to have some sort of fee, some sort of mechanism that the jurisdictions understand should go to fire protection. Because all the benefits did not go to them because all the impact is not borne by them. Yes, sir.
Yeah. Rob, I'm not sure how you want to handle sort of questions, but, you know, on the, I have a question on the impact fee issue. Can I, should I ask it now?
Absolutely.
When we talk about an action plan, I would hope that, you know, sending something to our local jurisdictions is interesting, but it's not, it's not result.
It's not a means to end, yeah.
And I continue to believe strongly that the best way for us to move forward is for the fire district to create its own assessment district. And I don't want that issue to be lost until such time as my colleagues on the board say, no, we don't want to do that. I think the, the history shows us that depending upon the local jurisdictions to approve things is a loser. So the next time you put this up, I would hope that on impact fees, there are a number of different actions. And, and one of them is doing it ourselves versus having them do it in, versus having doing it in conjunction with jurisdictions.
Right. You know, it's, you wanted to discuss that in April, which obviously we'll, we'll do it. Hopefully, we'll have some sort of early response back from the local jurisdictions.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
On the vehicle?
Yeah.
It says immediate need.
Right, so let me get to that one.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. And then I'll comment.
Yeah, I just thought I'd.
I just have a question.
He gives each one that I'm going to.
Feel free to, however you want to do it.
Well, on the first one, I made my point about impact fees.
So the only point, the only reason I put this in there, if you look at your, in your report, it's more of a bullet point than a number. It got converted here just because we wanted to do that. But is that it is out there. It is a source, potential source of revenue. The bottom line is, to your point, whether it's an impact fee or a benefit assessment, there has to be a longer-term solution going forward with the growth for developers and local jurisdictions to understand that the district should receive some of those benefits and pay their fair share of the cost.
And impact fees cannot be retroactive.
That's right.
So time is of the essence.
Right. We will, we are, we have already lost opportunities in the three years that we've constructed this report. But going forward, you know, and I'll speak to the director of Solano's question here in a second. So as we've batted around as staff, predominantly, you know, Chief Navarro, Stevens, and Assistant Chief Long and I, we're discussing what could we do right away? We've waited for things to happen in terms of the station being finished before we started looking at configurations. The reserve truck that we have today is, was bought for fifteen thousand dollars from another agency. It was a great deal, but it was only meant to be a temporary solution to a backup for the truck that we have. We're now at the point with the truck that we have needs to be replaced, and the reserve that we have, as I stated in there in the report, is over twenty, I think, twenty-six years old. So, you know, we need to do something right away. Both are, both are older, one is very old. It was never meant to be the permanent solution that it's kind of turned into. So when I say we're looking at a quint and we're doing that right away, and I even put that it could be used, as I put it here, you know, we need something to get in here as, as fast as we can. Then the question becomes, why a quint? Because as a backup, it could be an engine or a truck. And one of the solutions that we're looking at is if we're going to have split, split the district in half, as the City Gate report says, right now, to do that and not, not close down an engine company, you'd mean that you essentially would need to have two ladder trucks, which would be a net gain of twelve additional personnel. And that's a significant cost to the district. So as we talked about it, we're proposing more of a, you know, the trajectory or path, the curve goes up slightly, it gets us some of the immediate issues resolved, whether we buy the quint. I'm sorry, if we have the quint, we can do some of these things like we talked about, which is staffing, which I'll get to. But Rob, you had a question about the quint, or your number two.
Well, I know that in the ISO study?
Right.
That we had one ladder truck and then the spare truck.
Right.
And in order to outfit, well, the, the equipment that goes on one of the ladder trucks, if I remember, the spare did not have a complete equipment package for the second one.
Yeah, that's actually the thing, right? That's the thing right now.
Well, also, which I would like to add with the purchase, would be to make sure that all three ladder trucks, including the spare truck, all have a complete equipment output. Because in case, you know, I don't know what may happen, but if we need to put all three of those trucks in service, it would stand to reason if you had to move equipment from one truck to another. How long does that take, Chief?
Uh, I think you transition within an hour, but it takes time. So it's, yeah, it's not a plug and play, but I'm going to, let me address that coming up, because we're going to speak to that.
And then second question I want to ask. By not having that ladder truck or that equipped, did that cost us points on our ISO rate?
No, because we had a second truck. So ISO, and the second truck, the points you gained was, you know, moving away from ISO practicality, it makes more sense to have things that are turnkey to a point, to your, I think what you're saying. And so that's what we're going to be looking at. I mean, obviously, I want to say looking at, we're going to do it. Because, you know, let me go a little bit deeper on the, on why a quint? If we go to a quint with the current configuration that we have, not only is it the backup, but as you'll see and maybe read further down, is we can run different configurations. We can actually then, as we've discussed, we can move the truck, current truck, down to Station two in East Palo Alto and put the quint in service in replacement of an engine company, but having to do both functions in a different station. So essentially, this allows us as a model and an option to do different things in different stations that we couldn't do before. Where if we go with the truck that we currently have or something that looks like you can't fit it in the buildings that we currently have, except here at Station one and Station two. So it's a problem. So the quint buys us a reserve engine, it buys us a reserve truck, and it buys us the opportunity to do different things around the district and have two trucks in service at the same time, district.
Two questions. My recollection is that when we used to have quints, we had a problem with mutual aid in terms of deploy, you know, how you do, how dispatch dealt with a quint. Has that problem been solved? And second question is, is the structure of an impact fee set up so that expenses that we incur before the impact fee, impact fee is approved can be used as justification for the impact fee? Or does the impact fee only cover future expenditures?
So the first one is, on the, on the quint, you know, from what we have before, what we have before was an all-wheels here, it was problematic. These are, this is going to be a straight stick. It doesn't have the back wheels turning, which is.
But I understood it was a problem with dispatch because?
Well, that, that was a deployment problem. Yeah. We had two of those and no truck. Today, South San Francisco runs quints, it's in the deployment plan. So, you know, whether you put a Q or a T, you know, it's just a change in how you do the deployment. So either will work. On the second question, I'd have to look it up and talk to Tim Kremmon, but I don't believe, to your earlier point, you can go back and be retroactive or absorb some of the costs that you're talking about if you pass the impact fee.
Well, then you might want to pursue the question, can we lease the vehicle until the impact fee is passed and then purchase it after, through a lease purchase? So that the purchase expense would in fact come after the adoption of the impact fee.
The answer is, we can ask that question. Don's writing it down, because they're already looking at buying a piece of equipment.
Yeah, I think this is absolutely the right thing to do, but I would be, I'd feel horrible if we then turned around and found out we did this in order to be prepared for the development, but lo and behold, we can't charge the people who were doing the development because we did this before we did the impact fee.
Yeah, and you remember that, and you, you know, to clarify for Rob as well, we have a backup truck right now. It's, it's, it's way over, right, in terms of years. So we're replacing the backup. So we're not asking for it to be frontline unless we do an experiment, or we need it as the backup to the current truck when it breaks down. So, you know, it's, it's, it's moving partway there, but still giving ourselves options and opportunities. But we certainly can't continue to use a twenty-six-year-old piece of equipment that, you know, served us well, we got a great deal on it, but it's not on the line. So the station, this.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding. You said a couple of minutes ago that a new ladder truck would require twelve additional staff.
For a second ladder truck.
For a second ladder truck.
Correct.
But if you added a second truck that happened to be a quint, you'd need nine additional people, right?
Correct.
Okay. So it's really only additional.
Or you wouldn't need any, because you put a quint in a station where there's already three people on an engine.
They just shift.
Correct. So and that, and as we go through it, I think, you know, I'll explain how we, what we see in the future, how that could work. It's a kind of a duality of, of purpose here. So, you know, you know this already, we're looking at dedicating open Station two sometime, the April May format. You know, Peter had asked about this, we should have a date for the board, regular board meeting coming up. Our proposal, when the station opens up, because it's a very large facility, because all the data shows, as you saw, how busy Station two is, is to upstaff that station with a second, or excuse me, with a fourth person at the period of time that we open it up. Now, you know, does that jive with hiring and everything else? No, initially, it would be overtime to do it. But the reality is, is down the road, as you'll see, the proposal will be to hire additional staff to cover another person to the minimum number of FTEs that we have working daily. So staffing goes essentially from twenty-five to twenty-six, plus the chief, which is twenty-seven. So, yes, sir.
Why wouldn't you then be able to go down one firefighter at Station one?
Because in the MOU, we have a four-person truck company.
But can't the company follow a piece of equipment?
So remember, fourth person is for the engine, not necessarily the truck out there. So we're growing Station two by a person on the engine, not, not on the truck. Because we're bound within an MOU provision regarding our, what we can do. It's not a bad thing, it's just, you know, we've kind of tried to address it within.
The fourth person on Engine two, as it opens up, is to address all the slides you see leading into this, where it is forty percent of our call volume in that one district. So we have three people that are getting pretty beat up today. That fourth person's going to help with that workload, with continuing those calls, better effective response force if they roll in that structure fire, they've got that extra volume base. So it's kind of a, a way to improve that area based on the statistics we have for call volume.
If I may? Part of it is, is the traffic congestion that's been discussed. When there's delays coming from the west side to the east, east side, that first-end engine company, if there's delays with those rigs coming in, they don't meet the OSHA two in, two out. If you put the fourth person on Engine two, that gives you the second person outside where the first two go in, and that, that meets your OSHA requirements for two in, two out. So it really addresses a safety issue.
So there's a, there's an immediate, to the City Gate report, there isn't a lessening of the impact to the number of units, because there's still two units on the east side, seventy-seven and two. But to what, you know, Don and I just said, it gives us an immediate improvement on the number of people necessary to do the job in the busiest place where the job gets done, you know, the most. So it, it's not a truck, but, you know, stay with me, we're, we're going to get there. So the fourth person would go at the opening of the station. Again, we originally accomplished this with overtime. There's no need for the board to approve that, simply because you approve the budget, you would work within budget. But through the normal budget processes, it says later in the presentation, reality is, is that, you know, when we get to the budget, we add another FTE and more, as you see, and that would be something you need to approve. Within the hiring that we have, I put that in as well with the minimum number of personnel. You know, we essentially still have plenty of latitude with the hiring that we're going to do to accomplish that. As you know, it says we're doing laterals, and then we'll do, you know, regular hiring as well coming up for entry level. The breaking of ground for Station Six, again, Station Two would be completed, Six would start. Again, the May-June timeframe is what we're looking at that right now. That will be securing the temporary quarters, making sure everything works out there so the engine's gonna operate up a lot, just like it did down in East Palo Alto. I mentioned the hiring of the laterals.
Have we kind of signed off on Mellow Park for that?
Mellow Park has a couple more little things to do, but John, you'll see it in the next board report, John's on them every day calling. And I think part of it too is the architect. So right now, I think John's on the architect. I think actually Mellow Park has done what it needs.
You know, they've signed off on the temporary housing and stuff like that.
Oh, that's all done.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 that was why we didn't put the trailer there. Because had we, we had to make a decision at one point, based upon maybe an overlap. So we decided, use the house, don't put the trailer there, because we gotta demo the house, put the trailer in. I would've guessed probably six more months, but-
We're gonna use the tent structure?
The tent structure, right now, you know, it's, it's open, but, you know, there's some issues regarding diesel and particulates and so forth. So at this point, we are not putting it up, from my knowledge.
As it stands right now, we're not putting the tent up.
Because we don't want to, or because Mellow Park won't allow us?
It's not, it's not because of Mellow Park.
Okay.
It had to do with trapping of diesel fumes and our ability to exhaust those, those kind of, those kind of issues.
Okay.
So we'll see, going forward, and hopefully we will be able to do that, because in terms of the sun, you know, elements, all those different things, I mean, I think that's the better way to go, but this issue just was raised, so we're still working our way through it. The three captains, as I mentioned, for promotionals, that's the replacement of those that retired at the end of the year. So it's a one-for-one, there's nothing new there. And then, at the end of the year, as I mentioned, the budget, as you get in a budget, that's where we'll add, you know, either additional FTEs within the budget or work off what already is allowed and allotted to us in the budget for hiring. The next one, number nine, ordering the smaller rescue squad. And when I say smaller, we're looking at a commercial chassis, four-person cab, light-duty package for lighting, extrication. I don't know if we ever settled on, I don't think we settled on water yet, but, you know, I know that Don and Jim and everybody's looking at that. But again, trying to put in place a much smaller two-person unit, and having to at least order no later than December. I don't know what the build-up or time would be, but that goes to the next point as well. Yes, sir.
I'm not gonna surprise you with this comment, but given the predominance of medical calls here-
Yes.
Why don't we consider the motor medic option?
The motorcycle medic, or?
Yeah.
It's coming. So I got it further down the presentation, so-
Okay, okay.
And you'll, and you'll like one of my pictures of their two vehicles. So we have considered, yes, sir.
Can you just summarize it, how many vehicles would be at Station Two? It sounds like three, that maybe you're saying?
It is three. So by the first of the year, when we were able to hire, and we have an apparatus in there, so if the plan is Station Two opens up, you immediately go to four people on the engine. So that's now on the east side, there's seven people, plus an effective force, you have, you meet the OSHA standard for two in, two out, for a fire in the place that gets the most fires, and is the busiest station. By January, which is coming up, in the apparatus, we get the light-duty squad rescue, then you staff that, that fourth person comes off the engine, and two people go onto the squad because you've added the fifth person. You end up with three pieces of equipment on the east side of the freeway. You end up with a total of eight people versus the original six that we have today. So again, we've-
Three, three, and two.
Three, three, two, that's correct.
How many bedrooms there?
How many what, bedrooms?
Bedrooms.
Station Two is eight.
Eight.
So plenty of room. Then the proposal within this, and a lot of this is in budget, so I don't want you to think that we don't have money, but it's right, yeah. But the reality is here, is, you know, as I said to approval, you need to approve these expenditures. So we're gonna come back with more justification, simply because of the expense. It's, you know, this is gonna be a lot of money. So this is where we start to get into the next part, which is, you know, if we start making these changes, what else do we need to do? We know we already needed to replace an engine, so that goes, that's already in the amortization schedule. And then the truck, we've looked at different configurations, and we've settled on, we believe that a, I think it's what, a tractor tiller now is what we're talking about, right?
Tiller.
Yeah, so a tiller truck, and we're still batting around what kind of tiller that would be, based upon turning radiuses, maneuverability, the ability to carry what we want to carry, that then the truck would be, instead of the straight-stick ladder that we currently have, would be a tiller configuration. And Station Two can accommodate that, Station One cannot accommodate that. That takes us then back to, look, we already have a Quint, so we still can put things here, we can put them at six, we can put it at three, and at some point, as we look here, you'll see a modification for Station Four, for the truck bay, we can put a Quint at Station Four as well. So, you know, you get into, the bigger you make something, where does it fit? Well, we know where it doesn't fit, but we also know where it does fit. So then, what makes sense is the configurations that we've already kind of laid out, simply because there's versatility to move those things around. Because, again, once you get the truck, that's a big mix of equipment, and it will not fit everywhere. To that, again, it will fit at Station Two, and to the timing, it takes about 18 months, two years?
We're guessing a year and a half to two years, but to have one delivered, by the time you start going through the specification process, the order, the buildup, and delivery, it takes that.
So it's not overnight. So the move that we make, once we make it, it's not an instantaneous fix, it takes time.
In that process, what constitutes the purchase date, when we take delivery?
For the financial side of it, as to when we-
No, from the standpoint of, for example, an assessment district. Now, would the purchase be when we submitted the purchase order, or would the purchase be when we accepted delivery?
Um, I think we do a prepayment, the way it's sold.
Do you get discounts, you can either get multi-unit discount, if you have a couple units, but you also get a significant discount for prepaying chassis. So you are paying upfront for part of this. Now, once again, new equipment, Modesto was just looking at this, of doing a lease option program for several engines and trucks.
I would just encourage you to just look carefully at the timing of the transaction in terms of a assessment district, to make sure that we don't incur an expense before we get the answer on the assessment district, and then not be able to roll that in as part of the justification.
And that's why it was number one, even though I know it says impact fee, but yeah, that's a, we don't want to cut our nose off to spite our face.
I'm sorry, now Kathy, on the recent engine we just got, another apparatus, final payment, how's that from the get-delivery, is that-
We had done a prepayment.
Right. Prepayment.
For the discount. Yes, sir.
Number 10, are we talking about one, two, or three?
So three, so an engine, right, just like the engines that we have here.
Plus a tiller truck, plus a heavy rescuer.
Right, so let me get to the heavy rescue, they have not addressed that. So one of the things that we've looked at, our rescue is over the threshold of 100,000 miles in 20 years. You know, as we grow, again, the stations that have, and we lighten the load, for example, if we take the truck out of Station One, it goes to Station Two, it allows us to move the force of these things. The rescue is moving around over time, the older piece of equipment that we have. There's a couple of different issues with it, which is, it wasn't frontline anymore. And we're not proposing the naked frontline, we're proposing a naked, a piece of equipment you can cross staff. And one of the reasons for that is because we don't run it all the time. That doesn't mean the configuration can't change down the road. But again, we can't downsize with a light rescue with two people on it, and then, you know, upsize again, which is what we did here years ago, to a bigger piece of equipment. So the genesis of the squads and rescues, Rex knows this, he was involved with it, is they used to be smaller pieces of equipment, and then as they got bigger, you know, we tried to put more stuff on it. We're not proposing not to have big pieces of equipment that can be the bigger toolbox. We just can't do both right now. But we can buy both pieces of equipment, and we certainly can put the equipment that we had on it, and making it, again, a useful tool when we need the tool. Or changing configuration, Dr. Rob.
And just for clarification for you, Director, the engine and the tiller truck, those are currently budgeted, funded, placed in items, those aren't new?
Yeah, the heavy, the heavy is not in there, it was pulled out years ago.
When you get those two, aren't you then creating also two reserve engines?
We would, so reserves, as we get rid of apparatus, we do, we create reserves. And what that does for us is a good example during fire season, wildland season, is it allows us to put those reserves in play, so that we keep the stations all open in the district with a piece of equipment. Or in the case of a breakdown, we have an additional piece of equipment put in place.
So you're talking number two is something that you really only need for about nine months? Insofar as you're gonna get it, then you'll get two reserves by itself?
Correct, well, we would have a second, we'd have a truck, then it would come out of service and be a straight-stick reserve truck, you're right. But again, in the meantime, we have to replace the reserve we have. I mean, we're well over, but our problem has continually been no place to put things in configurations, and if we go a certain direction, and we change our mind, then we got, we got bigger problems. And we've done that years ago with the Quints that we had. The penalties and the cost of us going to a whole new system, and not kind of easing into something that we found out worked, because it didn't work well for us. Mostly the all-wheel steer was the problem. You know, it was, it was a nightmare.
You said it's so bad that it can't wait nine months.
Yeah, no, we don't want to wait nine months. And here's the, you know, look at it again, the benefit is, we can do things and try things out that we couldn't do before. So it gives us an opportunity to test things. Again, you know, we're a small agency, once we go a certain direction, you know, that's it. And I think, you know, what we're looking at, we know we want to go to the tiller truck, we only, you know where that fits and where it doesn't fit, that's not really the issue. The bigger issue is the second truck, and that configuration as well. And you mentioned, you know, the staffing, staffing's an issue for us, and how we need to do it. But part of it is under control, part of it is not under control, it's within the provisions of the MOU.
Let me just follow up with one more question related to staffing, so I understood, the fourth firefighter that you add in April or May-
Yep.
Really is only temporary until you get to number nine, the rescue squad, because then that person gets-
Correct.
So it's really only a seven or eight-month period.
That's right.
Okay, that wasn't clear.
Okay, I'm glad it's clear now, because again, if you look at the path that we're climbing, you add staffing, it's not like this, it's a slow path up. So we add a person, and, you know, the logical reason behind that too is not just, it's not just necessity or opportunity to rig, it's also the current staffing that we have. So, you know, we, you know, we have eight people we just hired, we hope to have nine, one drop out. So we added a fourth person to the truck, so if the eight, that's minus three, so now you have five. Of the five that we hired, we had four retire after we hired those people, now we're to plus one. So with eight people, we only got one more person in staffing. And that's why we're looking at, again, doing the laterals, and that's also where we're looking at hiring more people again at the end of the year. Ideally, as you'll see, we try and norm it later, we try and hire three to six a year. You know, again, that's difficult based upon, people can tell you when they're gonna retire, and sometimes it's after the academy starts, which was a topic of discussion, Chief's meetings, well, yesterday. So hopefully, yeah, that makes more sense. Again, the ultimate goal is to get to January 2017, have a second rig in service, a squad rescue on the east side, and staffing goes up on the east side from six to eight. All right, moving on. Number 11, modify the truck bay in Station Four, as I mentioned, that if you put a, any kind of truck up there now, it cannot hold the truck simply because of the door height. So we would make a modification to the door height. It was a truck bay at one point, in fact, I got a photograph of that from years ago. It used to be a squad, an engine, and a truck up at Station Four back in the day. So what was, what was old is now new again, to some degree, is with the squads and rescue concept as well.
Is that a relatively low-budget item, or is that, you have to jack up the whole station?
It's, we actually looked at it, no, we can modify the doorway, it's not a huge, a huge expense.
Where is the new wildland fire vehicle?
So that'll be at Station Four as well, and there is room to have the engine, a truck, and that utility or patrol.
Utility vehicle?
Right, and they were cross-staffed to patrol unnecessarily as well. And our backup, so you know, if we don't end up getting the squad rescue in time by January, we can still use the patrol, because it's not during wildland season either, we would put that, we've discussed that. So our plan, some of the fail safes, is we will have apparatus available to do it, regardless if it doesn't show up, you know, what exactly the piece of equipment we want, we can start that process. Number 12, test deployment configurations, which, you know, I've discussed already with you, and we've discussed the staff, again, moving things around, trying different things. We also have a modeling simulator that we're using now, Don's gonna talk about that for a couple minutes, I have a slide in here. But again, you can see truck activity today, you know, 685 calls, and a lot of those, remember it's a toolbox, it's not just about the ladder. A lot of those are on the freeway. So as you change things around, as we do different tests, you know, you can see, the calls are all over the district, but where's the concentration? If you were to run a truck on the east side and a truck on the west side, what's the best place to do that? And, you know, again, that's, that's gonna be calculated once we, once we do some, some tests. Number 13, add a fifth firefighter/paramedic to Station Two. That was the discussion, remember, there it is, Director Bernstein, January, that's the one we were talking about, so that's where you get the squad going into service. And then Don and I have been, you know, talking about, he's been working on, along with Jim, in the last several years, looking at accreditation. So a lot of the things that we've been doing help towards starting that process. And, you know, that's, that's kind of a placeholder, it may modify, you know, sooner or later, but that's something we want to do as well, because that's a self-assessment that we're doing. There's the hire three-to-six entry-level firefighters or firefighter paramedics in September 2017. That's where you try and start in the morning, the hiring, from the big hirings that are done. You know, speaking as a guy that came from, you know, years when there was 20 of us on probation over probably about three years, you know, that also means a lot of people leave at the same time of retirement. So if you can norm it over time, that's just a better, you know, smaller slope in terms of replacement, that makes it easier on everybody if you do that. Bigger groups take a lot more time, a lot more energy, and a lot more work. You know, basically, also allow us to not do as much, simply because we spend more time trying to train them. Number 16, dedicate truck two, so that's the tiller. As Don mentioned, anywhere between 18 months and two years. And then finalize where the Quint would be on the other, the west side. Is it at one, is it at three, is it at four, is it at six? You know, it could be at any one of those places. Second battalion chief concept, this is new, and you probably have never heard this, and it's something we're looking at. So we have four battalion chiefs currently, it would not be a stretch to get two more, and basically split workload up. We had this, we had a pretty good discussion the other day about this. It wouldn't, you know, there's more to come, obviously you gotta validate, prove what this would be, but it's not lost on me that if we increase the number of staff on the east side, if Caltrans does what they say they're gonna do, which is tear down the Willow Road overpass, you know, east side's gonna be cut off. So whether we do this at certain hours of the day, but the two battalion concept means that you cover the east side with a battalion chief, and you cover the west side with a battalion chief. What we started to do, and actually we're doing when we had the battalion chief at Station Six, which, again, there's a space for within the building, because we have a bay you can back a vehicle in, and enough rooms at Station Six to house battalion chief and an engine, or a truck, or a Quint, or whatever we're gonna put there. So when that station gets built, that will be able to accommodate that. But in the meantime, you know, we're gonna look at further vetting this. And I think one of the other things we liked about this, with all the different responsibilities, with all the different things that we do, we constantly talk about workload, constantly talk about what we're trying to get done, what we wish we could get done, what we are getting done. And again, the stretch is not for three chief officers, it would be for two more at a battalion level. And essentially, we will need to do something when the overpass goes down, and as the call volume starts to go up on the east side, again, certain hours of the day, it's difficult, as we all know, for the chief to get over there as well, in conjunction with the truck and so forth. So, you know, solving the aerial or the truck issue or staffing issue isn't completely solved unless you look at the command aspect as well. Number 18, in the subsequent year after we order one, we're looking at, this is normal. The norming here is another engine would be replacing, that's on the schedule. The Quint is new, that would mean we've settled on, if we body-use Quint, or look at the one that we have and see if it's working, to Director Bernstein's point, wouldn't you add, wouldn't you still end up with a reserve truck with the one that we have currently? The answer is yes, so that'll be, that's, that's, that's something we would discuss at that point. And then the water tender, I think as Director Carter and Silla don't know, because we've discussed this, we actually have a water system built in the Station Six right now, on the costing. But part of the discussion there is that whose responsibility is that? So there's about $400,000 in the Station Six budget currently, that we could replace the existing water tender that we have currently at the rescue site, which we use for live-fire burns, and then, you know, maybe repurpose that to be more of a frontline, cross-staffed piece of equipment as well. That's just something we're starting to discuss, we haven't fully, again, vetted that out either, but it's on the table here, it's something we'll look at. Number 19, update the ISO review 2018. They don't have us with, again, more equipment, more people- I don't have us with again, more equipment, more people and things in place. See where that goes. Can we get to a one again? That's still a pretty tall order, but we'll, you know, again, we'll take a look at it. The normal hiring again, three to six entry level paramedic, you know, again, just trying to norm it. And then breaking ground on a new fire station one, we're looking at by June of 2018, which we will again, need to ask you for permission to go out and get architects and so forth because, you know, one of the things that's been discussed and must be discussed again, do we bring, if we only have an, an engine here, let's say at some point, because the truck is now in East Palo Alto, the battalion chief is one on the east side, there's one at station six, this station opens up quite a bit. But as you know, we need classrooms, we need a training area, we need the ability to have the board meetings. I mean, everything we build, we want to have enough room for additional pieces of equipment. So, you know, what does station one need to cover? And that's the question. I mean, again, as the other pieces fall into place, what it really starts to look like is this station has less personnel in it simply because, you know, look at the call volume, which was dropping this last year. It, it makes sense to put things other places just because of, you know, difficulty to serve, having enough effective fire force, the call volume, you know, everything. So, you know, we'll continue to monitor that, look at it, and see what we're going to do. But we do believe it's the next place to, to build simply because of how bad indeed the station is of a total redo. And it is the Winchester Mystery House of remodels. So, you know, we'd want to do another one. Number 22 is, in every build, we're looking at about two years of the station built. So again, you know, we'll be looking at architects coming up. 22 is test engine two, truck two, engine 77, squad rescue 77 concept. In this concept, what we use preload, splitting forces on the east side. Again, under presumption that you're going to, we're going to rebuild 77. And so looking at balancing out the resources, not having them all at station two in East Palo Alto. But again, with all the development, including in the 77s area, trying to balance from what, you know, could be three units in one place and one in another to a two and two concept across the board there. So, you know, again, trying to front load and look at it before we do anything to see if it's going to, you know, be beneficial or not. The hiring, and then they put the end repeats, heard it over and over. And then number 24, again, this is depending upon what we're going to do at 77, certainly it could accelerate. But, you know, looking at that in June of 2020, to rebuild the station, this is not purely looking, remodeled based upon, in my opinion, I think, you know, remodeled to the level that we would need to build the station that we want, it doesn't make sense. I mean, it's currently a 20-year-old facility, but what is proposed out of the east side based upon the way and why these stations were built, you know, there's no room really for growth in the crew, the day rooms, the bathrooms, the offices are all completely undersized for all we need. So, you know, to me, it's almost a scrape and a redo at this point. And then looking at station four in 2022, to rebuild that. And then on number 26, add a fourth firefighter to station four. If we locate the quint there, we upgrade the number of personnel. But station four has always been the harder one to serve in terms of the number of firefighters and the distances out there. And don't forget, you know, even though SLAC has had less calls than projected, we still protect a relatively significant contract resource. And so having again, an engine truck on that side of the, that side of the district and having more people to operate it, I think makes a lot of sense in terms of effective fire force.
Every time I drive by, SLAC keeps growing.
Peter, I was just up there for my meeting. I got to tell you, it's amazing what they got planned and they got the money to do it. I mean, what they're, what they've built, what they're going to build and how big it's going to get. The 100-room, I don't know if Don knows this, the 100-room hotel they use for visiting scientists, which during the off months, you know, Stanford uses for housing for patients and their families, they're proposing to put that up to about 300 versus 100 people in there. So I mean, you know, you know, housing's an issue, so they're going to try, people are going to try and tuck this stuff in everywhere they can. 27, test the truck engine model. What that simply means is looking at four, I didn't put it with station if I should have put that. This is up at station four after it gets built. That's where can we go to the truck engine model? But remember, the truck engine model currently is you add, you'd add, even if we go to four people, you'd add nine more people in that model versus the standard four that would be on a quint as proposed in number 26. So, you know, and, and currently it's three. And three is what's in the MOU with the firefighters. That's a, you know, that was something that they agreed to as well. So all those things are relevant, of course. There's going to be another MOU negotiations between now and 25. And, you know, I won't be here to see him, so good luck with those. But, you know, the reality is all these things could be discussed. And I think, you know, the union also has an interest in wanting to see things done in staffing correctly because it essentially is also the protection of their members and their workload and so forth. So reevaluating, update the standards of cover. Again, I think that was 2025 as I recall, sorry, I put the date in there, but that is, that gets addressed. So that's the, the 10-year look. Going to some of the issues, just to cover them again, fiscal impact and authority. Again, we follow the normal budget process for 16, 17. That addresses the staffing issues. That addresses if we need more FTEs, what those costs will be. I know Director Bernstein had said, hey, you know, I was hoping for a little longer discussion, but I want to assure you, this isn't the only discussion you're going to have on this because you're the final authority, you know, authoritative folks. And, you know, when you asked me last time, you said, we don't want a recommendation, we want a plan. Well, here's the plan. And so, you know, you get to agree or disagree on these things, obviously. And it's tough to make, make the case to make sure the money's there as well to do it. New apparatus again requires more authorization. And we're talking about a significant number of pieces of equipment. Peter, you raise, I think, great questions about the timing. So we're, we're sent to that as well. But certainly, we need to buy certain things that would have normally been on the amortization schedule as well. So I wouldn't want to hold up other things and, you know, we need.
My recommendation is that working with Rob, that at some point in the next few months, you come to us with a five-year capital improvement plan, which includes both facilities and equipment. Or so that the board says, okay, this, these are the investments we're going to be making over the next five years or maybe the next 10 years, if you want to include facilities. And then we at least have a benchmark we can come back to and then you may come to us and say, we want to accelerate this purchase, we have to postpone this, that we, we have a multi, just dealing with this stuff in the context of the annual budget doesn't work very well.
Right. So that's the next one. So you're, you're ahead of me, but we're on the same page. So station design priority, again, the CIP is monthly, but, you know, contract authorization required for architects. We certainly can do it that way where we, we cull out just those pieces because those are, those are the big expensive pieces. And also covered by quite honestly, you know, either an impact fee or an assessment or those elements. Because not, not personnel, that's a different, as we all know, that's a different thing. And that'll be again in the budget and that, that goes up slowly. Real property purchase obviously requires board authority as well. So if we choose to get more land, additional space next to the fire stations, whatever we're going to do to do any of these remodels, you know, we would do that then. And our history has been essentially, we were in the past, have hired a real estate agent, set them loose, and then also had them look around the community for other places that we could grow into. That's tough right now with the costs, obviously, but, you know.
Not going to get any cheaper.
I know, it's not going to get cheaper. And, and, you know, I think we're actually, our deployment is pretty good. And, you know, having, living in San Jose and down the street from station 30 that had a truck and a medic unit, no water, and then had a four alarm fire across the street and two old Victorians, you know, I think, again, we're very sensitive to making sure we have, you know, water and meaning engines in all our facilities and we have, you know, other capabilities in addition too, but not, not replacing the engine companies. Again, real property is something we go through use. So the board ultimately has the fiscal authority, but you're right, you know, it's on us to bring it to you in a package that's sellable and makes sense and is cost-effective. And, you know, trust me, the last thing we would want to do is put the district in financial straits. I don't, nobody wants that. You know, to a positive, again, positive note, we have, you know, as of last year, all the compensation agreements have been done. So for three years, we know pretty much what we're going to be paying. It's a good, you know, it's a good position to be in as I, again, told the Wall Street Journal, thanks Peter for having called me, but, you know, it's a very predictive model that we're in and other people wish they were us, believe me. So, you know, and that's, again, we're at the 70th percentile for compensation. So we have, you know, the means to do different things and all we needed was really a plan and authorization to do it. So you asked about the motorcycles. You asked about, well, you didn't ask about cameras and drones, but you know, you know, the future is coming and, and, you know, you can see it, it can see you pretty much too these days. So let me go to the motorcycles. I'll let Chief Navarro and the other chiefs jump in. You know, we looked at actual lead based upon call volume and where we had issues. We looked at training. We looked at the cost. We looked at the number of medics necessary because it wouldn't just be one, it would be two, and probably would be in one vehicle, it would be two. We looked at staffing. We looked at the, again, the equipment, the insurance, the benefit. And then we looked at the ability of a culture, whether it's the union, the chief officers, to address it. And at the end of that exercise, and it was an exercise, it was, the decision was, we would rather move towards a lighter duty piece of equipment that gives us some versatility. But the motorcycles in of themselves, we didn't think that we were ready for yet and really didn't see a huge benefit based upon our ability to get to the calls with the way that we were already doing business. Not to say that it wouldn't.
Help me understand. I mean, Willow Road, Marsh Road.
Right.
You need a, you need a vehicle lane for anything that's got four wheels.
It's true.
And so making it lighter, you know, still doesn't change the requirement.
But making it lighter also means that you would have, and I know they do it elsewhere. We looked at what type of equipment we carry, what we needed to carry, you know, the risk to the operators, how many people would need to be trained. I mean, it isn't, we're a smaller agency, Peter. I'm not going to say, I'm not going to say it couldn't work, but we all felt that the best model right now, especially where the call volume was, was to add another smaller unit and give ourselves the opportunity to use it that way. I'll let, I know Chief Navarro looked at it and, or Don, if you want to jump in. I'm trying to get out of it.
Well, I have a question before.
Yep.
With the motorcycles. I know, being a former motorcycle policeman myself, there are risks involved, riding motorcycles. Is there anything that, like, we have to have the association sign off, let's say if we did approve this?
The change of working conditions. That is a definitive change of working conditions.
So that would have to be kind of like a volunteer position for a EMT or paramedic or a motorcycle?
Also meet and confer issue. We have to negotiate that change in service with the union. They would have to accept the, the conditions. But there are probably two dozen cities in the United States that have this model. It's, it's a proven model. And I just look at the difficulty that we have in moving in this district. And I'm looking at all this big equipment we're building and I just worry about, and I look at the preponderance of medical calls, particularly on the east side.
I can express, you know, the discussions we had, it's like you said, a couple of things are off the top. Is statistically, you increase your percentage of being killed in auto accidents, 26% might just be on a motorcycle. If you add on top of that, it's a fair weather vehicle, you know, riding in the rain, the equipment, that's not a good thing. You add on top of that, it would ask our people to do exactly what kills a young man to start the conversation, which is splitting lanes, driving through vehicles, round vehicles, you know, very low visible vehicle. Those are some concerns, concerns that jumped out to me immediately. So it's, it's a very limited approach addressing a, a very small concern, not the bigger reasons, but what happened in that conversation. But what we feel is if we can put this squad unit in, in the service or multiple squad units as we move down the road, we can address what happened to the gentleman on the freeway by having a squad unit with light extrication tools, EMS on one side of freeway, a truck, something similar on this side of freeway. So no matter what time of day the traffic's blocked, if we're sending both those units from east to west, one of them can get there quickly. Because it's, it's one way or the other where we have our issues at a time of day. And then you factor in what we feel is the yield. Do we focus on a small capability or are we looking to spend our money, which is something that addresses that, but's a little more capable of other things? And that's where we tended to land in that sense, a smaller vehicle, it can carry extrication equipment, so it's just not EMS, it can draw some life. We can put a small pump on it where it can handle small vehicle fires, dumpster fires, things like that. So we felt that we've got more bang for our buck, still addressed some of the traffic issues. I don't know if we say we always address all of them, but we felt that the squad is where we landed on that. Like I said, I nearly even got in conversations with the labor side because I was a little hesitant to start that conversation until.
One of the things I've learned in my years is that the great thing about the fire service is it has traditions. The bad thing about the fire service is it has traditions. You know, and I'm probably going to leave this board having never, you know, resolved this issue to my satisfaction, but my job is to ask questions. Your job is to be operational experts.
But I want to assure you, we did look at. In fact, Chief Navarro did research on it and the whole thing.
Did you talk to other people who were doing it and say, hey, what do you think about?
You know, I haven't, I haven't reached out to anyone, but I have done some research. You know, a couple of agencies that you're probably talking about, it is Miami Day Fire Rescue. They implemented back in late 97 or something like that. They typically use that motorcycle unit for special events. They typically use it for a small period of time of day from eight to five. Now granted, this is an agency that has 1,000-plus employees involved in it. LA County is one of the ones here in California that's done it. Their focus is more on new wildland. You know, they have these hybrid dirt bikes, street bikes, that they can get to these things assessed quickly and things along those lines. So ironically, there's a few departments that do it, but there's not a lot of info on it, you know, just a straight internet search. I even read that resolutions where Miami Day Rescue went into this program, it was a trial program back in the late 90s. But when I, you know, currently look at their website, I don't see any mention of it on their website. So I'm not even sure, you know.
Is Daytona still doing it? They were the pioneers.
You know, Daytona, I didn't know. Like I said, I found Miami Day, I found LA County, both trial periods, some other little discussion there. My position on this is for what we're trying to do right now, we feel we've got the right solution, but that does not mean that motorcycle just cannot be addressed down.
Well, the other model that I would encourage you to look at is the Tokyo model. And Tokyo has probably got some of the worst traffic congestion in the world. And so what they've done in Tokyo is they prepositioned a lot of equipment in neighborhoods. And so they simply moved their firefighters around, literally some of them on foot, to, to get to the equipment. And I think if you look carefully at some of the distribution of needs, you know, it may well be that there are a couple of places where we might want to think about prepositioning equipment during certain times of the day, perhaps with operators. It's sort of like AMR used to do with ambulances. You know, they sort of figure out where's the place that they ought to park the ambulance. So maybe we just have some parking pads in the district that are preconfigured so that they have electrical hookups, they have telephone hookups and stuff like that. We have a light vehicle that is assigned to those spots on a as-needed basis. Again, this is an operational issue and all I'm trying to do is to raise the question of, you have, you've made us very aware that you have traffic problems. And I see here a list of big, huge pieces of equipment. And I just want to make sure that we're not on a collision course between buying stuff that we can't move.
If, if I may, just to address a couple of those concerns, a couple of points, system status is, is what ambulance companies use, but ambulance companies, their crew, all they do all day is, is make themselves available to run the medical calls. We actually take our firefighters and we make them do much more all day long. Everything from, from equipment checks, maintenance and repair, to maintenance on our facilities, to ongoing training, to business house inspections, to pre-fire planning, to public education. With, there's a laundry list of what we have these folks do. So to try and adopt a, a system status model like the ambulance is, is going to be extremely difficult and probably would diminish productivity. The, the other thing is, is when we're talking about motorcycles, we were talking, we seem to be focusing mainly on our traffic concerns and our ability to respond to medicals with that single motorcycle, get somebody on scene, which is an innovative idea and it, and it[1796.38] is an interesting idea. But I think with, with what Chief Chapa Hama is, is trying to, to, the direction he's trying to move the organization in, what it does is it addresses more than just the traffic issue and that single medical call. What it does is it builds an effective firefighting force on the east side where we have our biggest coverage problem and we have over 41% of our call volume. So, if we have an effective firefighting force on the east side, we take care of, of safety for our firefighters by having an, an effective force on scene quicker. And we also provide for, for our customers by providing them with that effective force quicker. And we make multiple rigs available to handle that emergency medical that comes in without having to deal with that traffic. So, it diminishes the, the traffic congested, congestion. And now, I say that, that's not to discount your, your innovative ideas, I certainly, for one, appreciate...
They're innovative questions, not ideas.
Yeah, but I mean, innovative...
You guys are the professionals, you've looked at it and think this is the way to go.
Right, that's right, I just wanna make sure that you understand, it's, we actually, we, we appreciate the innovation, we really do. We're, we're trying to move the fire service forward, not backwards. I, I'm on board with that.
I don't wanna move it backwards either.
So, the other two in here as well, if you, if you look, you know, this is an overhead shot of, you know, the aircraft crash that we had in East Palo Alto. You know, situation awareness is a real important thing and we don't have it on the freeways, we don't have it in the corridors. So, part of what I'm working on now with Caltrans is, is they actually have links in Menlo Park in East Palo Alto, I don't think even the city's fully understood some of the links, but the traffic cameras that are on all the street signals. So, you know, all we need is the link, I know I gotta get Ben hooked up with their, with their guy, he's probably seeing the emails, but then we can tap into the camera network and actually look, not only the freeways, we've been discussing this on the freeways as well, that they would even put up more cameras, we could do some of that. So that, you know, when you get these innocuous calls on the freeway, nobody understands where they are half the time, you can actually look and see where people are versus now we go in blind. You know, is it in Santa Maria, is it on the right shoulder, is it past the market area, is it northbound, is it southbound? I mean, the, the ability for us to actually use technology in the future is gonna be different than it is today, to where you can actually find what it is, see what it is, and I'm not gonna say change deployment at this point, but that is something we've been discussing is, you know, once you see it, you know, what is it? And is that the only thing? You know, and again, that's, that, we go in blind half the time. Drones is another one of those, you know, we hope to be the first to get our approval from the FAA. You know, I'm not really looking to be the first, we're really looking to be able to use what we have. And so, that's another piece of equipment that down the road, you know, if it's not a camera that can see it, is something that we can fly and, you know, do an overview of the scene to see if in fact, you know, it's a, what is, what is the kind of call that we're dealing with. Next month, DJI, which has given us the original drone on loan that we're using or hope to use, is gonna give us one of the first blur drones as well. So, you know, I think we're in a good position and we're not doing it alone. NASA's been very helpful with us to try and get through this process to be able to finally be able to fly these things. So, you know, again, the technology, yeah, Peter's not a motorcycle, but you know, hopefully we'll have a little air force at some point, have a lot more ability to look at cameras and see things that we couldn't see before and that'll give us better situational awareness, which should be helpful with any operation.
On the situational awareness issue, and you and I have some conversations about this, I would just urge you to put a lot of emphasis on tethered drones. Tethered drones have two advantages, one of which I, I think they're much more susceptible to create problems elsewhere. And second, they have on station capability. You can keep that thing up there for two hours, three hours, four hours, 'cause your power's coming from the ground. And for most incidents that we have, if you're 100, 200, 300 feet off the ground, you've got a really good observation platform for situational awareness.
And I know that Tom Cowherd, who left the room, and Chris Dennebaum, I sent them all of that, and we're looking into it, so. I'm gonna let Dawn explain what this means. Again, I think, you know, Ben and Dawn and the IT guys have been working on using this new predictive modeling, so besides testing that we can do, which I think is an important thing, the other one that we're using now is predictive modeling, let Dawn talk about what's, you know, what we've been, how many hours of time we've had IT working on loading up this new modeling system so we can kind of pre-run different configurations, so.
So, most of the data we've applied to the fire service for decades is, you know, the dashboard, you know, what's currently happening right now. And from that, we've always applied our years of experience and, you know, good general knowledge, you know, what do we think that means down the road? And for the most part, I'd say we've probably been fairly accurate, but I'm sure that there's some mistakes made in the data of fire service. What's really about this, it's a, it's a new software out there that's actually predictive modeling. It's taking what your past data has, what you currently have, and now you could basically plug in the what-ifs, what if we do this, what if we move this station here, what if we add this type of unit, what if we remove this type of unit? That predictive model, model scenario will run and it gives you a quantitative guess on what would, that's how it's gonna impact things based off data versus, you know, us guessing or applying our knowledge in the past. So, once we saw the opportunity for this, there's a couple of agents Palo Alto's been using it, Redwood City has just recently jumped on board, and then Woodside also jumped on board with us when we initiated this and went through the training, which, you know, not only helps us, but since we do operate in a county-wide system, you know, if, say back in the day when Redwood City decided to close Engine 9, you know, if we would've had this back in the day, we'd have seen what significantly close impacts that would've had on us. I mean, now, we saw what impacts were over the years, but we had to live it, see, or maybe we are, not, not. So, we went through the training, I gotta tell you, the IT guys have done the bulk of carrying water on this and the workload. I sat through as much training as I could with my schedule, but it's a nice combination. You got, you know, I provided the operational side of the questions in, in the models, where they have the, the software, not manipulation, but adding, building the models, building the sims, so, you know, it's been a good team, they've done a lot of work. And this is just one sample, I mean, we all pretty much, you know, feel that adding a squad down to the east side is gonna be a positive impact. But by building that model and plugging this in, here's a simple chart, it kinda shows us based on that predictive model what it's gonna do. So, the blue is basically, you know, how we currently operate based on 2015 stats. So, 2015 calls were all uploaded and put in this. And then what the guys did is they built, okay, now let's apply a squad to Station 2 and let's apply some rules to that. And so, the general rules we did just sort out was, the squad would pick up all Code 2 calls on the east side as primary, that leaves Engine 2 and Engine 77 available for the Code 3 caller or the structure required. However, if 2 or 77 did go out on a Code 3 call, the squad would then pick up a secondary Code 3, because we know we have multiple Code 3 calls in 2's district. So, that's kind of just the base model, that they apply the rules, and what you can see is, the blue's current, the gold bar is how that impacts us with that new model. So, you see on the far right Squad 2, obviously it's only a single bar because it's a brand new unit. But if we come back to the left and you go to Engine 1, which is our second band of bars there, you can see that drop between the blue and the gold, that's showing your percent utilization of that unit going down. So, that means the squad is taking workload off Engine 1. You keep going across, obviously our biggest jump is Engine 2, because it's gonna be housed in 2's district. So, Engine 2 is seeing some relief on those calls, the squad's picking some up. Engine 3, just a tad, Engine 4, just a tad, Engine 5, you see a little bit bigger group and what we found out there is because Engine 5 and Engine 1, the benefit that they sees, they're not having to come across the freeway as often to pick up those second or third calls. So, this is just a real brief visual of what this predictive model can do down the road. So, you know, we could have our guesses, we could put things in place and, and see how it works. This adds another, you know, branch to that stool to say, hey, we can actually plug in some data and do a predictive model of what we think we want to do and see what the results are. And it's pretty much unlimited. So, I got, I got handed to Ben and the IT guys, because they spent countless hours in the conference room next to my office, working on this, while they let me do my other work. Does that pretty much sum it up?
Pretty much, yeah.
Yeah. So, it's a, it's a good tool for us down the road, I think it's gonna be beneficial. This is just a glimpse of, a snapshot of what we did with the squad, just to kinda show you what it can do for us.
And Dawn mentioned that's to pick up the second call, you know, the Code 2 calls and second calls that covers as well? You know, that doesn't mean that down the road we can't use it for Code 3, that's another thing we did before, squads used to take the Code 3 medicals. Back in those days, there weren't 340 type codes in CAT either. So, you know, you could really drill down on type codes, you could add, you know, more than one rig, so you could have two pieces of equipment on a certain calls based upon the type coding. You could have, you know, one rig, a squad, another time it's the engine based upon the staffing you, you think you need, based upon a level of medical call. So, you know, there's a lot more work that can get done, but we know that the squad, the rescue squad will take pressure off of the engine and will take pressure off of other units that would then be forced to come over the freeway. Again, there's bad times in it, trying to do that, to get in the, in the east side District 2 or District 77. Remember, City Gate had, at 67% of the time that we're running one call, we'll run a second call right afterwards simultaneously, meaning that that unit then is already occupied. So, what that means is, when Engine 2 goes out, 77's the next unit to come into their area as we discussed, but then, there's nothing on the east side left. Now, you get, you draw the cover in, the cover's gonna come over the freeway to get there. If we tear down the Willow Road overpass, how much more difficult does that make it? So, again, kind of the necessity here is gonna be that third piece of equipment for the east side of the freeway. And that, and again, that's a start to what needs to happen over there, you know, the truck, the battalion chief, those are all things that we're, again, looking at. So, how did we come up with these items? It was a collective collaborative process based upon experience and many years of service, sitting at the back table there, right? We have reviewed up to 60 years of data, not every year, but you know, the 30-year increments on the annual reports kinda gave us a good look backwards. We're working with other cities, and our cities on their general plans, circulation plans, so we see what's in the pipeline, we see what's being built. John's here and we meet all the time regarding what prevention has coming in the door, he's going to the DRT meetings on what people wanna build. I mean, you know, I never thought I'd see, you know, what is it, six, seven high rises down on the old Romic property, the end of Bay Road even being proposed, but that's, that's out there right now. So, I mean, you know, it's, if anything's possible apparently at this point. And then we have the daily impacts for real mercy incidents and real outcomes, good or bad, and we think this will be an improvement obviously going forward. With that, if you're there's a motorcycle. So, any questions? I like that shot.
Who is your helmet?
I wasn't, I wasn't, right, it's not a trailer, it's a boy trust his motorcycle. I wasn't great there either.
If you bought me one of those, I'd like to...
I wasn't great, but I'm still sitting down in that picture.
Yeah, but even if you're on the thing, like, you're still...
Is that right?
The keys in the ignition, the keys in the ignition. Did you have the keys in the ignition?
No. Dr. Percy?
Yeah, I'd like to make a couple comments.
Sure.
Of things. I, I think there's at least one capability that I would like to see you look at and that relates to hazardous materials. I know this, well, at least, I think I know that the closest vehicle is up in San Mateo or something.
101.
101, okay. But, but that's sufficiently far, given traffic on 101 and things like that, that I'd like to at least look at, at what we could do, it doesn't have to be some all-out, you know, dealing with radioactivity or some, you know, super toxic stuff, but I mean, these kind of things that could come from a tanker truck overturning on 101 or, or some sort of gas or, you know, chlorine or one of those kinds of things. And it seems to me that that's something, I was really impressed when I saw the training that the task force did out at the Baylands on the hazardous materials and so forth. And to me, it was more and more particularly with what's going into the east side and some of the biological sciences and it, it's a different kind of hazardous material, it's not caustic in the same way or poison, but it's potentially deadly in, in different ways. And just to have some knowledge about dealing with that, I think could be something important. I don't know how we get that in, in the district and have it be useful, but that's something I'd like to see us take a look at at least. The other thing, and I, I actually agree with the fire side of everything here, I mean, the kinds of equipment we're talking about, Rex has certainly recommended these kinds of, you know, things in terms of rescue and, and some of that and it makes sense, but it makes sense in terms of big structures or big buildings and even ladders and, and collapses and all that kind of stuff. But I'm really worried about the aging population, the people that are 70, 80, 90 years old that are gonna keel over and they're, they're gonna need an AD in, in, you know, two or three minutes or they're dead. And I'll tell you, I, you know, you look at, we are, for better or for worse, really more of a medical agency than a fire agency. I know that hurts people's feelings and it's not the traditions and all of that, but in terms of the kind of service that people are gonna be demanding, I just, I, I think we haven't really dealt with the responsiveness. And this response time, what Peter brings up, I think is really important. It may not be a motorcycle, or it may not be a motorcycle in the wrong sense of a motorcycle, you know, but this kind of a motorcycle. I mean, we could be talking about golf cart type of motorcycle. So, they're covered, they're, they are potentially all-weather. I think the kind of traffic situation we're dealing with, you know, the jaws of life, I can't see as an essential piece of equipment between about 3:00 and 7:00 o'clock at night anymore. Who's going at the kinds of speeds, you know, where you need to do that? And I'm not saying we shouldn't have it on, you know, part of our platform and all that kind of thing, but I'm talking about the guy who can get there or the woman who can get there in two minutes, where we need some sort of a narrow-based vehicle that can go up the sidewalk or go up, just get around stuff. And Peter's right, I mean, we're talking about these big, massive pieces of equipment, which are important, we should have them, but we're not dealing with the response time. And we're talking about literally gridlock where I just don't feel like, I'm concerned about firefighter safety or paramedic safety, but we're not talking about speeds of that nature. We're talking about, if you could go 20 or 30 miles an hour up a sidewalk, that seems to be minimal safety risk, it seems to me you could have contained, contained thing. I'm talking about a golf cart, I don't know if you call that a motorcycle or not, I mean, they can be either electric or they could be gasoline-powered, but, but it's a narrow-based vehicle that can go on paths and roads and the shoulders and these kinds of things that our regular vehicles just can't go on. And I just...
Yeah, World Trade Center, for example, one of the things that you guys came back with and said, hey, you know, we've gotta have a gator. Those vehicles turned out to just be a godsend to the people at the World Trade Center. And this is a, a small, little vehicle and it was, you know, had lots of capability and was able to move around. And I think you've added that capability to some of the task forces now, haven't you?
Yeah, we've got two gators and a catch.
Yeah, well, how, you know, paying up on Dr. Percy's question, how, you know, is it at all conceivable that a gator would add, would give you more flexibility in some of these response situations without increased, without the increased risk of, of the motorcycle?
Well, I'm not gonna say it wouldn't. I think where you use it, to your point of sidewalks, you know, you'd have to have sidewalks, obviously. In some of these areas, and how we're getting around, to be quite honest with you, you see the videos, we go against the traffic flow. I, I'd rather be in something...
Or you go on the bicycle path.
True, I'd rather be in something bigger to go against traffic than smaller. But certainly not green, so you don't want the green gator from John Deere, but...
Well, look, those things don't preclude each other, you could do both of those things.
No, they don't, they don't.
And I, I'd be terrified going against traffic in, in some little golf cart, I mean, but that's what we're talking about, and frankly, why are we using those kinds of things? When we look at, let's, the street fair, Menlo Park and so forth, we're already using those kind of vehicles, somebody gives them to the fire district, as I see the guys, all the medical guys are using them. I just think, I would like to see us at least experiment with some of the things, maybe the ones we have, maybe get one, but let's see what the experience is and what it does to response time.
One of the concerns is, when you speak of the gators or the UTBs or whatever you wanna call it, in California, most of those are not street legal and we're still bound by California state laws when it comes to what to be on the roadway. Now, motorcycle, it's street legal, you can do that. But the gators, things like that, just 'cause they're emergency service, it does exclude us, so there's concerns, it's worth looking into, I'm just saying that...
But, no, but under 35 mile an hour is a wholly different category, it's got a whole bunch of these electric vehicles that are street legal.
You're talking about the, I can't think of the name right now, but I know what you're talking about now. talking about now.
Urban something.
I used to own one of those U T Vs, so, you know, I thought I could make it street legal and that's how I found it. But now I know what you're talking about, those mini electrics that.
Yeah, there's a category in California.
Can't think of the name right now, yeah.
That under thirty-five mile, on any road that's under thirty-five miles an hour, you know, that's street legal and it doesn't have to have airbags, it doesn't have to have sorts of other things.
Shoot, there was one more thing I was just going to mention is part of this effort of public advocacy and so forth. I'm not saying we should be supporting or not supporting it, but there's a lot of talk about the bus-only lanes on places like El Camino and so forth. I don't know why they couldn't be bus plus emergency vehicle lanes. And I think it would be worth advocating a broader use for those in an emergency.
Yeah, you know, you bring up a good point. Unfortunately, the San Clara County is the one that's doing that, not San Mateo County. San Mateo County is proposing, you know, the bike lanes. And that's jurisdiction by jurisdiction, so, yeah, there's no.
Bus-only lanes.
Yeah, bus-only is in San Clara County. It hasn't gone through yet, but I mean, that's the proposal.
I think it's part of the discussion though on the grand billboard and some of that.
It is. And, you know, one of the things, because I wrote in a letter on that too, which said, you know, why don't you just pay for preemption for your fire apparatus to use the same thing? But, you know, I can only bring it up. And that's in a wholly different county. But, you know, the one they'll point out with these studies and those reports is Caltrans, in my opinion, gave away the common good when they started allowing every jurisdiction to try and figure it out on their own. I mean, I get why you do it because there's local involvement, you know, you can engage people, what do you want in your community? The problem is there's no sense of the bigger purpose anymore for a highway along El Camino. Everybody wants to do their own thing. So you could conceivably have bike lanes in Menlo Park or bus lane in Palo Alto, nothing in Atherton, you know, and no place to really put anything unless you take a lane. So that's, you know, it's just so chopped up now with different concepts and ideas. And even the letter we got back, I think from Caltrans, you know, trying to insert the district as a player, a separate player, I really wasn't too impressed with the answer. So, you know.
Well, as I mentioned to you before the meeting, I really do urge you to join with your county chiefs and send a letter that you also, you know, the fire service is held in great respect. And if the fire chiefs in this county all signed a letter saying, hey folks, you know, there's a huge problem here and you're not addressing it, and these issues need to be part of everything that's done, I think it would carry some weight. The other thing that I wanted to touch on, when do we, when's the next revision of the fire code?
Coming up in the next few months and it'll be done by June for adoption, January.
I would like very much to recommend that in our interactions with the city of Menlo Park, we insist upon retaining fire district veto rights on primary response routes. And then unless they're prepared to give up on that, then we will not approve in the fire code. I think we made a huge mistake when we cut, we carved out Menlo Park from the state fire code requirement that the fire district have veto authority on primary response route changes. And I'm hoping that we can use the next fire code as a mechanism to reverse that decision.
So we actually had it in the ordinance, Menlo Park didn't want it, and it isn't necessarily in the fire code, right, John?
Yeah, we actually don't have jurisdictions on roads like that. Do you own private roads?
Well, no. Correct me if I'm wrong, but as we went through this discussion, the other jurisdictions, the code that we had gave the fire district veto authority with respect to changes to transportation, to primary response routes. And as it was explained to the board, the city of Menlo Park was not prepared to do that, so we had to use different language for the city of Menlo Park. And my recollection may be wrong, wouldn't be the first time.
Yeah, I'll detail a little specifics, but yeah, we have definitely more input on it, but we still do not have.
In Menlo Park.
Like, like design aspects.
Help me on this, because you know, I've got some conversation.
Right, so Menlo, because the other jurisdictions passed our ordinance and in our ordinance we have that control, inadvertently we could have done more things in Atherton, East Palo Alto and so forth, not because we tried to sneak it in or fool them, but because that was within the ordinance. When Menlo Park, one of the sticky points with Menlo Park was in our ordinance, the same language which they said they didn't want in there gave us more authority over the road and our ability to control what they were doing with traffic control devices and so forth, so.
So when the code comes up, are we going to have to do another ordinance?
Yes.
Yeah, we do it.
I would just urge at that time that the board consider taking a position and saying, hey, our ordinance is going to be this, the same for all four jurisdictions. And if Menlo Park doesn't like it, you know, that's their problem. And any benefits in the new fire code aren't going to accrue to the city of Menlo Park until such time as you agree to it. I mean, we gave them a huge benefit in terms of changing the sprinkler requirements by going to the new fire code.
Especially if it's for commercial.
And we got nothing in return for that, giving them that.
Pete, we have the meeting at five.
Yep.
That's what I'm trying to keep us on.
I'm sorry.
But can we make it an agenda item for what, for a meeting coming up?
What?
You want to talk about the code?
Well, it'll come to us and I just think, well.
Yeah, let me, let me ask you. So, you know, we've done now a special for finance, we've done a special for operations, obviously there's more to do, but that's covered in there how that can be done. The other thing I wanted to do, and I, you know, John and I have discussed this, is to do a special on prevention and growth, other issues that, you know, John's confronting in terms of development, because it doesn't, it's not the whole picture just to look at the operations side. So, you know, I'd love to be able to do another one of these in April, and if not April, maybe May, but just a special meeting, two hours, you know, it'll be John, myself primarily doing it, John doing most of the talking because this is his area of expertise, but, you know, about specifically of prevention, code enforcement, growth, you know, the division, the workload, you know, the strategy going forward to address those things. You know, I don't know if you know it or not, I thought maybe I mentioned it, but maybe I didn't. January is the busiest month that we've ever had in prevention, number of plants coming. Same thing in the city of Menlo Park, so it's following suit. You know, if you look, if you remember the presentation in January, it did include prevention there at Menlo Level, but it showed that this last year was the busiest year we've ever had. I mean, we continue to grow and grow and grow and grow.
Well, I would like that we can do that, just because I don't think that we, I mean, I know I don't know everything that we would need to know in terms of the permitting process. I mean, we do get asked those questions and with the development, it's rapid development, especially in the more at-risk areas, right? And we're going to need the most serviced one, at least, I think we need to be prepared to answer, to answer questions for the public too.
That's fine.
Well, because the fee schedule's coming too.
Right. And that's all timed, all timed together.
Yeah, you got to approve a new fee schedule. And last time it was, it was a few people weren't happy, but I mean, you know.
How about maybe an hour and a half of slides and thirty minutes of questions? Could you do that, John?
Or thirty minutes of slides and hour and a half of questions.
Or maybe, you know.
I'm not as much of a talker, but hey.
There you go. Maybe we're working out that much.
Definitely what, one of the things I will be looking for will be a direction of philosophy for the direction, because as we do, we're starting our new fee schedule assessment this next month. And also I'm already beginning the discussions with the cities and working with their planning, building, et cetera. Again, all of our code, model scope, concept, all of our language will actually coincide with each other when it comes to roads, et cetera. So when it comes to the philosophy, I will need some direction on that so that I will know how to approach the overall picture.
That's what I mean, I'm thinking maybe an hour and a half and then that thirty minutes interaction that we would need order to reemphasize with you and your staff.
Yeah, so Michelle survey you and find another gate separate from the board meeting like you did for this one?
Yeah.
Because we were hitting all the big stuff. And then just in summary, because we're right at the time, you know, again, there are things we're going to start moving forward with and they're going to come back, some of those will come back to you, obviously based upon this presentation, so.
All right.
And finally, as a closer today, you see the badge up on the screen there, I think it's a nice looking badge, it's why it's in every picture, I think, your one-hundred-year org.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Seriously, gosh.
I'm going to do it.
Rex has another question.
It's not as much a question as it is a comment, but I look down here when you have your apparatus, the models that you're, you're learning out.
Yep.
I'm thinking about the M-two project that's out in seventy-seven's district. I kind of think I would like to eventually work to the place where you had an engine or a quay or whatever it is, the station seventy-seven, but I think I'd like to have a squad up there too, just for the simple fact that you have more people in it, you start thinking about, well, it's squads on medical calls, much like you did in the past. We're going to rebuild the station, so let's plan ahead with a squad, a truck and an engine to be there. And use that squad just like we do with two.
So it does have that later on, but it pulls the squad, Rex, if you look at number, number twenty-two, at least on the, on the board report. But to your point, one of the reasons that we didn't put a full time in there initially is because that station's at about seven hundred ninety-nine, seven hundred ninety calls versus station two, which is over two thousand.
But again, you see, right, you're talking about longer range plan right here. We're talking about the M-two, the apartment buildings and the expansion of Facebook and the rest of it out there. Call volume, it thought was going to go up.
Right. But right now, obviously, because seventy-seven, I agree with you. M-two's, M-two's got to get, start to get built out and then we're going to see.
That's what I say, I'm not saying we do it today, but I think that we need to think when we rebuild that station.
Oh, absolutely.
Plan for that, but the intentions of, eventually we'll probably end up with an engine, a truck and a squad there, just to have a call line.
So the standard model, as you know, that we're trying to build is at least a three-day, you know, outside of the six where you had, you know, to stuff it back into a certain area.
Check everything. Well, to even take a one.
But you guys are going to try to.
Step. Think about it twenty, twenty-five years down the road, which is what we're talking about here.
We'll be flying, we'll be flying drones all over the place.
Well, yeah, but if we can't get across one-on-one and you have a major earthquake or disaster, what you're going to end up with is what's on the other side, period.
Well, that's why we put the DC in there too, because eventually, you know, it's all really problematic. Our problem is basically how do you get there, primarily across these thresholds.
See, every once in a while, they're even, I'm thinking about.
Chuck, a question.
Yeah, I can just do, I want to just follow up on Rex's, so I understood, the call volume, the differential between two and seventy-seven is largely just determined by dispatch at the county level, right?
By geographic area.
But couldn't we do something to adjust that slightly or even out those calls?
Well, it's all in our control. So we look by response blocks, by how much time it takes, so it's to the closest station. But remember, even, even when engine two is out, station seventy-seven, part of the data for two or seventy-seven call volume is then going into two's area.
Yeah. For every address in the district is a run sheet. And the run sheet has the assignments, this first, second, third, fourth, fifth, and that's all determined on response times. So the only way that we could shift more load would be assigning a lower response time to some properties than they would have by getting it from station two. So our priority always is passive response time is the first one on the run sheet.
And to your point, the big limiting factor of that is Willow Road.
Yeah.
Yeah, response block.
Because seventy-seven can go over there, but it's longer response time for seventy-seven to get across Willow Road than it is to send engine two down there. Believe that, I mean, how dumb is that?
Let me say something that sort of affects CERT in some way, and it's not something we need to resolve here at all, but originally I understood that we were looking at the district as kind of divided into two parts, sort of one side of El Camino and the other side of El Camino. And there was a movement afoot to turn it into three different sections. That is El Camino up to two-eighty, El Camino to one-on-one, and then one-on-one out to the bayland or something like that. You see now, and I'm not arguing with it, but just as I was getting into my head that we're moving toward three divisions, suddenly now we're talking about two divisions, east side, west side. And at some point, I just think we want to be clear, I just need clarity on what we're talking about organizationally and administratively, because CERT was emulating some of this in terms of its structure also.
So that was the three division that was always based upon a disaster, because there was natural barriers that you may not be able to cross. Highway one-on-one would be one of them. The other one was on the rail line, you know, that that was kind of the other boundary that was impacted, the guards were down, almost like we saw, we had the rack and they closed it down, you could carve the city into different pieces. So the three divisions was always based upon a disaster. Somewhere along the line, it got reduced to two, but for purposes of how we operate every day, there pretty much is, it's all based upon the difficulty of access, right? Is the eastern side with only three ways in, you know, Marsh, Willow and University, and then the rest of the district. I mean, you know, you could also say, if I was going to say we're going into Woodside Portola Valley, there's only three ways in there too, Alpine, Sand Hill, Woodside Road. And that was in that letter that I tried to bring up to the county of the interplay between Woodside and ourselves if they start messing around with Alpine Road. So those are kind of the big feeders, you know, but I, you know, we could even distill it down to the railroad tracks and how many places you can actually get across the railroad if they start increasing the number of trains as an example, you know? Those are factors. They're not as big day-to-day, but the big one is, and we all know it, is the overpasses. That's, there's no way around it.
All right. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Great job, staff, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, staff.
Thanks to the chiefs.
Seems very beautiful.